Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Higher Education. At this time, please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruptions throughout the hearing. If you have testimony you wish to submit for the record, you may do so via email at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. At any time throughout the hearing, please do not approach the dais. Thank you for cooperation. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Good afternoon. I'm Councilmember Eric Dinowitz, Chair of the Committee on Higher Education and a proud CUNY alum. Welcome to our oversight hearing engaging CUNY students in voting and civic activities. With an important national election on the horizon and a voter registration deadline of October 26th coming up, many New Yorkers are engaged in a civic debate that will shape our city, state, and nation. Many of us are trying to make sure that no one is left out of the debate and that everyone who is eligible is registered and ready to vote on November 5th. That includes tens of thousands of CUNY students, some of whom are 18 years old, who will be voting for the first time. I hope that for them, filling in those little ovals on the ballot never gets old. But apparently in New York, flipping the thing got old. Unfortunately, I missed that. While voting is a fundamental right and responsibility, civic engagement goes beyond voting. Civic engagement is about striving to make a difference in the life of our communities and developing the knowledge, skills, values, and motivation to do that. Working to make that difference is why we are all here today. As it turns out, CUNY Chancellor Felix Matos Rodriguez said it even better. He said, "Beyond academic and professional success, public institutions of higher learning were conceived as incubators of civic engagement," what I like to call civic mobility. Often praised as New York City's greatest engine of economic and social mobility, the chancellor has brought in CUNY's mission to include civic mobility. He described it as "the idea that a key role played by our universities," particularly a great public university system like CUNY, "is to shape the next generation of citizens." The chancellor pointed out that CUNY had, in fact, been an engine of civic mobility since it was founded as the first free higher education public institution in the United States. What could be more important than that? In an op-ed piece that he wrote, Chancellor Matos Rodriguez explained that it is CUNY's job to turn out graduates who are well-informed, socially aware, and actively engaged in the world, particularly when our society is so polarized. He further explained that CUNY must ensure that its graduates are not only prepared to participate in society, but also motivated to make it better. He noted the large number of New York City and New York State public officials who had graduated from CUNY. I'm proud to be counted in that number. In fact, the chancellor wrote that CUNY's colleges were "the incubators of our public service aspirations." Further, the chancellor noted that CUNY bore a particular obligation to our diverse student population, including many CUNY students who are immigrants or the children of immigrants. He explained that CUNY has a responsibility to teach them about the power that individual citizens and communities have in American democracy. As we all know, that power includes the right to vote. I look forward to hearing today about CUNY's efforts in engaging its students in the voting process and in other civic engagement activities as well. And I want to acknowledge my colleague, Councilmember Christopher Marte, who is here today. I would also like to thank Adam Staropoli, my Legislative and Budget Director, Jenna Klaus, my Chief of Staff, Sahar Moazami, the Committee's Counsel, and Regina Paul, the Committee's Policy Analyst. I would like to remind everyone who wishes to testify in person today, you must fill out an appearance card, which is located on the desk of the sergeant at arms near the entrance of this room. Please fill it out, even if you have already registered to testify in advance. To allow as many people as possible to testify, public testimony will be limited to three minutes per person. I am also going to ask my colleagues to limit their questions and comments to five minutes. Please note that witnesses who are here will testify before those on Zoom. Now, in accordance with the rules of the council, I will administer the affirmation to the witnesses from CUNY. So please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Thank you. As a reminder to all of our witnesses, please state your name prior to your testimony for the record.
I'm Denise Maybank, and I'll say that again in a moment. But Chairperson Dinowitz and members of the Committee on Higher Education, thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony as you consider the engagement of CUNY students in voting and civic activities. My name is Denise Maybank, and I have the privilege of serving as the Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs at the City University of New York. I have come before you on prior occasions to share information regarding various services and supportive resources for the amazing students who choose CUNY as the university with which to partner to leverage their success. Today, I come to share the expanse of work across the university associated with your current area of focus. I am joined by colleagues from our campuses and central office units, who will give you a glimpse into the associated spaces and activities and assist me in responding to your questions. The panel includes CUNY contributors to voter awareness, voter education, and activism in a variety of ways. The panel seated before you today represents the diversity of those contributions. These individuals will be introduced throughout my testimony. I also want to introduce the resource panel joining us. Stacy Emanuel, y'all can lift a hand or do something so people know which one you are, Deputy Director of the CUNY Office of City Relations, Steven Kleinberg, University Coordinator of CUNY Votes and Disability Services Specialist, Amna Malik, Senior University Director for the CUNY Career Development and Internships Unit, and Raymond Perez, the Interim Director of CUNY Disability Programs. To set the context, you know when you hear something that's a great idea, you repeat it. So I'm going to say some of the things that Chairperson Dinowitz already pointed to, coming from Chancellor Matos Rodriguez. But as the largest urban university in the nation, the City University of New York is described as a transformative engine of social mobility, that is, a critical component of the lifeblood of New York City. In a 2023 interview, Chancellor Felix Matos Rodriguez discussed the idea of civic mobility, referring to the importance of developing pathways for students to engage more intentionally with the world during their academic journeys. Given the CUNY commitment to the career success of its graduates, civic mobility is linked to social and economic mobility for students, their families, and communities. CUNY plays a vital role in New York City. CUNY is New York City. Our students are everywhere, helping to make the city vibrant and creating equity. Their participation as positive, contributing, and informed members of the democratic process is essential. Through an arrangement with the New York City Board of Elections, we are able to receive student voter registration forms labeled as Code D. The New York City Board of Elections reports submissions by borough in their annual report. The Office of Applied Research Evaluation and Data Analytics at CUNY, which we refer to fondly as AURIDA, provides an annual report of student voter registration and turnout by matching New York State voter data files with university enrollment files. The report tracks by college New York City resident registration rates, turnout of registered voters, and presents the number of first-time registrants for presidential, midterm, and municipal elections. These data have provided insights into the voting behavior of CUNY students. With data segmented by senior and community colleges, we observe voter registration and election turnout to be higher among our senior college students and highest among those students enrolled in graduate and professional programs, which get counted in that senior college category. Registration rates are variable across elections with a low of 43.8% in the 2022 midterm election and a high of 71.8% in the 2020 presidential election. Election turnout rates are highest for presidential elections. Who would have thought? With the highest reported number being 72.3% for the 2020 election and lowest on average, I'm sorry, for municipal elections, although the lowest reported rate, 17.3, was for the 2014 midterm election. Student voice in action. Offering voter registration strategies that resonate with the student population necessitates the involvement of current students. Trustee and University Senate Chairperson Salamatu Dumbuya will be testifying before you today, and you will learn more of the USS commitment to the work they do and the events they offer to keep the student body engaged as informed voters. NIIPerg, the New York Public Interest Research Group, is a unique entity founded and led by students to elevate their voices and ideas associated with civic engagement. We bring Megan Ahern, the NIIPerg Program Director, before you today to provide a glimpse into the power and productivity of students punctuating what is possible when they lead the way.
All right. Thank you, Chair Dinowitz, and members of the Committee on Higher Education for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Megan Ahern. I'm Program Director for NIIPerg. We're a statewide, nonpartisan, nonprofit organization founded and directed by college students, founded in 1973 at Queens College to engage their peers in civic life. And I'll start with a quote, "No one can better scout out effective and promising methods of engaging young people than young people themselves." That observation is borne out by research supporting the value of students reaching students and doing so face-to-face. NIIPerg's model brings this concept to life. Our Board of Directors, as has been stated, is students elected from college campuses with NIIPerg chapters. There's nine here in CUNY, 10 across the city, and 15 across the state, including SUNY and Privates. As bona fide directors of a nonprofit organization, students on the board shape a program that resonates with students because students choose it. By working with our full-time, on-campus organizing professionals, students learn skills such as how to most effectively conduct one-on-one educational outreach and communicate with media outlets, organize educational events, and deliver compelling public speeches. NIIPerg students across the state reach tens of thousands of their peers face-to-face each year, and in doing so systematically learn about their peers' interests and introduce easy ways, entryways into civic engagement to the student body at large. They could be walking down the hall to class, and all of a sudden they're looking at a clipboard with a registration form on it, and such starts their journey into civic engagement. Hundreds of thousands of students have registered to vote, registered others to vote, and built their civic participation through NIIPerg. And our goal of our democracy project is to teach students how to raise the volume of the student voice by registering thousands of new voters and encouraging those voters and those already registered to turn out to the polls. When NIIPerg, CUNY Votes, and CUNY Colleges work in tandem with NIIPerg staff and students, meeting with administrators, coordinating with Student Affairs, collaborating with faculty and student governments and student clubs, the results are reflected in the impressive number of CUNY D forms submitted to the Board of Elections each year. In 2023, our registration drive registered over 10,000 students to vote, 7,000 at CUNY alone, and assisted thousands of students to double-check that they were adequately registered, checking their registration status. In a presidential election year such as this, the buzz builds earlier. During the last non-COVID presidential election year, NIIPerg registered nearly 20,000 students to vote, and we're on pace this year to reach that, if not surpass that. So far, we've registered nearly 4,800 students to vote in just two and a half weeks. So with the guidance of NIIPerg staff, CUNY students are building their confidence and knowledge, learning how to properly register voters, organizing daily outreach tables, making presentations in classrooms to reach students across any major or study area, making announcements to student government associations, and sharing voting rights fact sheets and voter guides. When we get closer to the election, we'll be organizing phone banks and text reminders when polls are open and to look for their poll site, organizing get-out-the-vote tables for students to look up their poll site, and coordinating social media campaigns to reach their peers by sharing why voting matters to them this year. Students with NIIPerg are bringing to life what research has shown about voter engagement, that by far the most effective and meaningful technique studied has been to use peer-to-peer contact. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Megan. Effective communication to promote awareness and action remains a part of our engagement strategy. The following list presents just some of the tools that have been used. CUNY Votes has social media handles that exist on multiple platforms. Our Communications and Marketing Office provides social media graphics and other toolkit materials to their campus counterparts and voter registration coordinators each election cycle. Past voter awareness projects through communications and marketing include the creation of posters, brochures, digital web and TV banners for campuses, PSA videos with students, and the chancellor's news wire. To specifically look at what happens on campuses, the CUNY campuses have designed voter registration coordinators, have designated, I'm sorry, voter registration coordinators who facilitate year-round voter registration while also planning and host of events, program seminars, and courses to educate and keep the campus community aware of what may be happening in national and local cycles. Given what we know of student voting behavior, we want to highlight the deliberate and successful efforts being conducted on our community college campuses. I'm trying to beat you to questions today. We have invited Helen Margaret Nassar, the Voter Registration Coordinator for Kingsborough Community College, to share the work being done.
Good morning. My name is Helen Margaret Nassar. Good morning, Chair Dinowitz, members of the New York City Council Committee on Higher Education. My name is Helen Margaret Nassar, and I serve as the Director of the Student Union and Intercultural Center at Kingsborough Community College. I also serve as the college's Student Voter Registration Coordinator. Thank you for your interest in voter engagement and education at Kingsborough. I would also like to thank Vice Chancellor Maybank for the invitation. As the only community college in one of the nation's most diverse counties, I could not imagine a more apt place to be actively working on civic engagement, voter education, and student empowerment. This work is also embedded in the college's longstanding commitment to civic engagement and the mission of the Student Union and Intercultural Center. This work is also part of my own personal story, as my parents immigrated from Egypt, and my dad said to never forfeit the right to vote, so you can see where my passion derives. We have led voter education and registration since 2017. As part of its mission to foster intercultural understanding, student-faculty collaboration, leadership, civic engagement, and a deeper sense of belonging that complements academic programs and enhances the educational experience of the Kingsborough community. Thanks to data from the National Study of Learning, Voting, and Engagement, known as NSOLV, we have been able to see how our efforts at KCC have changed over time and compare it to the national average. NSOLV offers colleges and universities an opportunity to learn their student registration and voting rates. Since we have begun to promote voter registration and civic holidays as part of the mission and in alignment with the college's commitment, 2014 NSOLV data showed KCC's voting rate at 6.7%. 2020 NSOLV report showed that number has increased to 34.7%. However, many of our students feel disconnected, unseen, and disinterested in political life. Voter registration drives are often met with shrugs and skepticism. Even if Megan puts a clipboard in their face, it takes a lot of time to convince them to fill out their personal information. I've recently taken up the mantra, "Just register now, and then we'll decide about getting you to vote, but let's just start with registering." Nonetheless, students are paying attention, and they do care. They are not apathetic. Students are able to engage in conversations about the issues that impact them on a daily basis, ask the hard questions, and model dialogue across differences. There is so much power in the lived experiences of our students. Whether they are born and raised in Brooklyn, first-generation immigrants, DACA or undocumented or international students, they all have something to contribute to the conversation about political education, and our classrooms and campuses are enriched by this diversity and nuance. We help our students make the connection between what they observe and experience and the involvement in political processes and structures. We are also aware that not everyone at KCC is eligible to vote. With a high number of international students and DACA and undocumented students, we also have to be very explicit in who and how we engage in voter registration. Not everyone can register to vote or vote, but they can become informed on the issues that impact their lives and become effective advocates to their friends and family who can vote. There is also a richness that is held from our students who have experiences living in countries with autocratic or totalitarian regimes. By sharing their experiences, they can help develop a greater appreciation for the political rights that exist and have been fought for in the United States. For the last two academic years, our voter drives have been supported by federal work-study students, who we call Engage the Election Student Workers. They are trained using resources and develop brief presentations to be made in classes in addition to weekly registration campaigns and social media content. And as Megan indicated, that peer-to-peer contact and having students speak directly has been an effective strategy. Our programming is intentional, deliberate, and nuanced to reach students in myriad ways. We are collaborative with several partners. Tomorrow, as you may know, is National Voter Registration Day and also Constitution Day, so it's one of our biggest days of the year to do voter registration. We encourage students to contemplate the Constitution by asking, "Who are we, the people, and what would make a more perfect union?" letting them know that their feedback and their contributions are important to the future of this country. We work with community-based organizations, advocacy groups, and national organizations to help bolster our efforts with resources and grant funds. Our communication efforts extend to students and faculty and staff via email, flyers, and social media. We offer a holistic approach beyond voting, because political engagement is constant and involves everyone and impacts everyone. Why would you want to sit this out? We show the power of advocacy movements within the United States and beyond through history to show that change takes time, courage, consistency, and collaboration, with documentary film screening, podcasts, rap lyrics, giveaways, and the old faithful free food, as always, to open the dialogue. We also empower students to understand that their skills and talents are valuable assets to change-making. We've had successful engagement and participation in the New York City Civic Engagement Commission's participatory budgeting program, The People's Money. Our students participated in Idea Generation and voting for borough-specific projects. This project helped elevate student concerns and illustrated political participation beyond voting and with direct impact on their communities. I am passionate about this work, and my efforts at KCC are the same regardless of whether it's a presidential election year or not. Every election matters from local to national, and every election has an impact on our students and their futures. I am grateful for several local and national partners that make this work easy. New York City Votes, the New York City Civic Engagement Commission, the CUNY Votes Group, National Students Learn/Students Vote Coalition, All in to Vote, Campus Vote Project, Pizza to the Polls will deliver free pizza pies to your campus for any voter registration drives, Gen Votes, which is a youth-led organization. If we are committed to a brighter future for our city, nation, and world, this is the type of synergy that is required. It should be consistent, collaborative, creative, and compassionate. I am grateful for faculty partners and administrators who support this work, and I am grateful to this opportunity to testify. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. I'm going to take a moment of privilege and just say that the cause for Helen being and the reason for her passion are with us today. Her mother and father are in the room, so I just wanted to acknowledge them. Moving on. CUNY leading...
Before we continue, I want to acknowledge we've been joined by Councilmembers Brewer and Botcher.
Thank you. CUNY leading voter activity. There are many campus-based activities and programs tied to national voter registration initiatives. Of special note are the events promoted last week during National Disability Voting Rights Week, which ran from September 9th through 13th. The Campus Disability Services Offices offered onsite voter registration throughout the week, and two special events were held. On the 10th, the CUNY Coalition for Students with Disabilities, my favorite, CCSD, in partnership with CUNY Votes, NIIPerg, the University Student Senate, also my favorite, and others sponsored a U.S. Presidential Debate Watch Party with pre-debate analysis by Dr. James Vaca. On September 12th, the CUNY Graduate Center hosted a Gathering in Recognition of the Week featuring State Assembly Member Rebecca A. Seawright. As you are likely aware, tomorrow, and you do know because Helen said it, September 17th is National Voter Registration Day and U.S. Constitution Day. So there must be something going on somewhere across CUNY. Here are just a few examples. CUNY Votes is participating as a National Voting Rights Day Coalition member. CUNY Votes USS, NIIPerg, and CCSD are initiating an awareness campaign about proposal number one on the statewide ballot. LaGuardia Community College has an event, Get the Scoop on Voter Registration, and if you show up there, you get free ice cream and information about voting processes and voter registration. John Jay College has our vote is our voice celebration. We have a list of the things happening across the university, not only for tomorrow, but throughout time that you will get as well, and I encourage you to take a look at that robust list of programming and to consider participating and showing up for something.
I'm happy to participate in the ice cream eating portion.
We'll get that to you. We'll make sure that happens. CUNY lifting voting in New York. Beyond expanding the knowledge and awareness of CUNY students, CUNY upholds the tenets of its strategic roadmap by contributing to the voter engagement of the city. In partnership with the League of Women Voters, CUNY Mapping Service, a unit of the Center of Urban Research at the Graduate Center, Imagineered the website, Who Represents Me, NYC. I introduce Steve Romaleski, Director of the CUNY Mapping Service and Lead Imagineer, to share his phenomenal project with you.
Thank you so much. I'm honored to be here. My name is Stephen Romaleski, and I direct the CUNY Mapping Service, which is a project of the Center for Urban Research based at CUNY's Graduate Center, as our center is directed by distinguished Professor John Mollinkoff. We work on a variety of different projects, but much of our work focuses on helping New Yorkers understand government, interact with their government, and participate and be counted as part of civic society, such as our work helping to ensure a fair and accurate census, understanding redistricting changes at the local, state, and federal level. We partner with the New York City Campaign Finance Board to analyze and map campaign contributions in municipal elections, and we regularly analyze voter registration and turnout data, demographic trends, and election outcomes. All of that information and data is publicly accessible, widely reported in the media. One of our most helpful services, as Vice Chancellor highlighted, is called Who Represents Me. It's an online, freely accessible website at mygovnyc.org. That's M-Y-G-O-V-N-Y-C dot org. And we've partnered with the League of Women Voters of New York City for the past 10 years and more to provide this service, in part with generous support from the New York Community Trust. And the idea is a simple one, to make it easy for anyone to identify all of their elected representatives for any location or street address in New York City. This includes community board, city council, of course, all of the citywide and borough-wide officials, state legislature and statewide office holders, Congress, U.S. Senate, all the way to President and Vice President. And we don't just provide a list, and of course, you can access it on your... And we don't just provide a list, and of course, you can access it on your computers now, on your phone, you could see it here on my phone as well. We don't just provide a list, but we provide detailed information for each representative, including local district office, as well as the City Hall Albany or Washington, D.C. office, email and phone numbers, social media handles, a map of the district, so you can see where you are in relation to the district, as well as the overlap with other districts. And you can easily share the information on social media or email. Even the mayor and his office did this last year, urging New Yorkers to use Who Represents Me to support, to reach out to elected officials and support his housing reform policies. We have updated and enhanced the website, including in part by incorporating the translate feature, so now you can see the information on the website in any of dozens of different languages. And importantly, the information needs to be kept up to date, because if it's not up to date, people are not going to want to use the service. The League of Women Voters excels at that, and they provide ongoing updates for the website. And the League and CUNY also promote the availability of the service at the CUNY Votes website, during trainings and presentations and the like. Elected officials themselves, you may all have used the website to help constituents. Other organizations provide links to the Who Represents Me service as diverse as DC-37, Partnership for New York City, formerly the Rent Stabilization Association, now the New York Apartment Association, Transportation Alternatives, and many others. And even New York City's 311 system uses Who Represents Me internally to help callers reach out to the right elected officials to help solve local problems. So I hope this information is helpful. I'd be glad to answer any questions and talk about the service. We welcome feedback on how it can be improved, and we hope it supports what you're looking at today as far as civic engagement and civic mobility that CUNY provides throughout the city. Thank you.
So as I bring our panel to a close, I offer a quote from Franklin Delano Roosevelt, and I quote, "Democracy cannot succeed unless those who express their choice are prepared to choose wisely. The real safeguard of democracy, therefore, is education." And so CUNY uses student voice, CUNY uses campus effort, CUNY does what it does to make sure that we lift New York for voting as well. We are committed to keeping before the CUNY community the value of the vote. Our right to vote is precious. Our right to vote holds power and fuels promise. To our students, we will continue to say, too much is at stake. You need to educate yourself, read it for yourself, don't wait for someone else to interpret it, know what you know. Be an educated voter. This is not about party affiliation, but it is about a relationship with information. This is not about your politics, but it is about your promise. Someone sacrificed for it, someone marched for it, someone fought for it, someone died for it. CUNY won't sit passively by and let it be wasted or denied. CUNY will promote the vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just have to say, Mr. Romaleski, I feel like I'm with a celebrity right now, because my office frequently uses the maps, including the redistricting map that you participated in, which is extremely helpful this year as our district has changed, and there's a lot of confusion among constituents about who the representative is and who it was, and some confusion among, you know, staff members too. So we use your service, so thank you for that.
That's great. Thank you very much. Glad it was helpful.
Yes, it continues to help. I want to start by asking the Chancellor Felix Matos-Rodriguez, he wrote about civic mobility. I referenced it in my opening, you referenced it. What does it actually mean, and how is it measured at CUNY?
I don't know that there's specifically a measure of it as a thing, but there is evidence of it in a variety of programs and services in terms of mobility being tied to our internship efforts, in terms of the civic aspects of it, and how that is engaged. And I'm gonna see if you want to offer some help with answering that at all.
Yeah, you'll have to sworn in.
Hello. Hi. My name is Omna Molek. I'm Senior University Director for...
Thank you. Would you please raise your right hand?
Yeah, you gotta be sworn in.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to council members' questions?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi. So in an effort to help answer and to build on the evidence piece, there are many different ways that we provide and promote civic mobility, and one being through CUNY TV. We have a CUNY forum where we invite and host elected officials and other members of the political bodies to come in and speak and educate students and speak to the different issues and concerns that are happening. We also have our internship programming through the Edward T. Rogowski Programming, so that's internships with local officials, state officials, city assembly. I will admit, we would love to have a better partnership with the council and have a stronger partnership, so I look forward to connecting and learning how we can do that in a more effective way. But internships allow students to learn about the process, understand why it's important to participate, so we have those opportunities as well.
So thank you for that. And, you know, it's very clear, I think this council also wants to ensure that our entire populace is engaged, but specifically CUNY students, that's why we're here today. So you mentioned a number of things, but just going back to the question, is there any way or any goals CUNY has set for itself? So for example, placing interns in a certain number of council member and assembly members' offices, registering a certain percentage of students to vote, having turnout for CUNY students to be a certain amount. Are any of those metrics used or looked at as we talk about civic mobility?
I was gonna add something before the goals part on civic mobility. Just, I've been working for NiPerg for about 17 years now, so I've seen a few generations of students go through, and it's not uncommon that I'll work with someone who now works for a nonprofit organization or in council staff or state government that said, "You know, I wasn't really involved until I registered to vote," or "I, you know, saw that there was a food drive going on, and it's something I remembered from being in high school, and I participated, and then I came around for your next meeting, and then I learned about a state policy, and then I went to the workshop where you were talking about the process that the state budget gets passed." And they grew a life of engagement and service to the community through just that one small step. So registering to vote is often that first step, and when you have a robust, you know, student affairs life on campus where it's not just you register to vote and then you go about your life and you're not continually engaged, just the educational experience is improved and civics becomes just a regular part of your day and your life.
Helen, were you gonna say something? Okay. So in response to the metrics question, I'm gonna turn again to my resource panel and see if anybody can tell me whether or not we are monitoring those metrics in particular. Because I'll tell you, from my personal experience in preparing for today, when I look at what we know about registration and turnout, I'm saying we can do better than that. I'm definitely on board with that and want to figure out what things we need to put in place, but I'm gonna turn and see if anyone can offer me anything.
Have you ever done any?
We've not done any. We're on it. Chair Dinoits, I'm all over that.
You gonna add something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we also track the number of people we register every year and strive to match it up with enrollments and to beat our enrollment-adjusted goals from year to year. So we are competitive with ourselves and like to improve on the voter registration numbers every year.
Yeah, and I want to go to the data, and it's sort of in line with the metrics and accountability is the wrong, I guess accountability would be the word. One is, is the data that you collect public? Is it posted on your website, again, number of registrants, number of people who have voted in certain elections? And secondly, for how long have you been collecting this data? Meaning, did you look at it now for this hearing to look back? Or have you continually, is this something you've been looking at since, I guess, 2014 was one of the midterm elections that you referenced?
2012, I think, is when we have data. That is the length of time we've been collecting. So Stacy, you wanna? Okay, a little bit longer than that. Stacy Emanuel can tell you about that.
We'll sign you, swear you can as well. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to council members' questions?
I do.
Thank you. And please state your name for the record.
Sure. Stacy Emanuel. I'm the Deputy Director in the Office of City Relations, but prior, also, I served as the prior Voter Registration Coordinator for the university. And so we have been keeping two sets of tracking of data. One through our code D, which Megan from NiPerg is familiar with. We have an arrangement with the New York City Board of Elections in which we can order voter registration forms that has a code, a little letter that says D, in order for us to track the forms that are being submitted to the New York City Board of Elections. So we have been keeping track of those that are submitted. The only caveat is that when they report it in the annual report, it's only by borough, so it's not by college, so it's not as useful. But since 2012, we've been collecting university-wide data through the New York State Board of Elections. We get the voter data file after each general election, and then we match it with the student enrollment based on those that are eligible to vote. And then that information is disseminated to the voter registration coordinators to help them with their efforts on their individual campuses. So it's been collected a lot longer, not, you know, just for this hearing, the data.
Thank you. Can you just clarify, you said you collect the voter, when you referenced the general election, you said you collect the voter registration data or the voter turnout data?
Both. So we request a voter data file from the New York State Board of Elections each year, but we do it after the general election has happened. And then our Institutional Research Office, OREDA, which our Vice Chancellor May Banks mentioned, they then take that voter data file and they match it with our student enrollment records. And that's how we get the voter registration rate for the university as a whole, and that's how we get the turnout, the participation at one election day.
Does that include participation in the primary elections?
No, we only do the general elections.
What's the thinking behind just doing general elections?
Because I don't think there was any thinking other than, you know, it's a lot of time involved, and it's a huge data file. And so for our research office, they're able to handle just doing it for the general election. It's the final election before we know who's voted into whatever particular office at that time.
All right. I would posit that civic engagement, I think, particularly in New York City, I think necessitates the engagement of students in a primary election, where in many districts, it is the primary election that determines who the representative will be.
Understood, understood. Something for us to look at moving forward, but I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I would say that's, you know, as we talk about metrics and accountability and trying to better the process, I would think that would be one of the most critical ways, particularly, as was mentioned, municipal elections, which don't always have the highest turnouts to begin with, are even lower in the primary election, which again, really determine, really engage people in New York City. And that's, in many cases, where the elected officials are doing the door knocking, where they're doing the phone calls, that's really where, you know, ramps up. So you're collecting the data for the general election, registration, and turnout for the How do CUNY's curricula in various fields support students' development of the combination, the quote, "combination of knowledge, skills, values, and motivation that can make a difference in the civic life of our communities"?
So there are different activities in the list that you'll get that is a partial list of things happening across the university. I know at one of the schools, they actually gave me the names of the courses. I'm trying to find it quickly. Oh, yeah. Okay, so Macaulay Honors College has two courses that they held up in particular. One is Decision 2024, The Election in Real Time. That would be MHC 331, if you would like to take it. The other course at Macaulay is MHC 347, and it is Ecosystems of Democracy. So there are faculty that are very much aligned with offering classes, particularly in the semester, and we can check and see if others are doing the same, but those were the ones that I had at the ready.
Cool. And are there efforts to integrate civic engagement into courses that may not be political science courses, but could work with that overlap? Is there any effort or talk of doing that? Yes, please.
Yep. I can speak on behalf of efforts at Kingsborough with the Student Union and Intercultural Center. Our work is heavily dependent on collaborating with faculty. So anytime we have an elected official come to speak, documentary film screenings, all of the events are carefully planned in conjunction with when classes are in session, with an invitation to the faculty to consider bringing their classes to the event as well, recognizing that if students are, if we're expecting students to walk through the door, even with the best free food, they may not. But if a faculty integrates it into their curriculum with extra credit or part of the syllabus, then they are more inclined to come, more inclined to be engaged regardless of the disciplines. So I've worked closely with many faculty over the years. I know a bit of their curriculum, so I can also anticipate what are the themes that we can have a broad civic engagement lens. So English faculty might be talking about immigration, you know, history classes might be talking about the right to vote, the environment, climate change. When I know that those themes extend in several different disciplines, I can plan events around those and taking that civic engagement guesswork out for the faculty and develop it with them.
I mean, I'm looking at NiPerg's website, for example, and, you know, there are a number of issues that NiPerg touches on, like higher education funding, hunger, homeless outreach, environment, mass transit, and consumer protection. And so it also sounds like there's a lot of room to grow in terms of saying different majors and courses that can integrate the civic engagement, which is already work that you're doing.
Yeah, and we also, we have service-based projects. The voter registration is housed within like the public service kind of thing. We also have a Small Claims Court Action Center where pre-law students counsel people going through the Small Claims Court on the procedures of civil courts and the goods drives that I mentioned before. But it's very broad, and so whatever issue a student is interested in, there's typically a home for them in NiPerg. But also, the part of the dual mission is to train students on the bread and butter organizing tactics and skills that can be unleashed on any issue post-graduation or even during school, that any issue that is important to them.
Thank you. I want to turn it over to Councilmember Brewer. Now?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I have to say, I think you do have a lot of statistics, and I really appreciate it. And getting them from the Department Board of Elections is really impressive. Congratulations. Their website had, still has, I think, June as the voting locations, not November. At least that was true last week. I love them, but thank goodness for you at CUNY. So I have a couple of questions. First of all, I think it's good that you're doing all of this, but there's still a lot of obstacles to getting people to vote. And so I just, from the amazing woman from Kingsborough, your parents should be very proud. You're doing an amazing job, very thinking outside the box. But how, there has to be more, because despite your good statistics, there could be better. So the question is, is it funding? Is it, maybe we need to have some kind of legislation that says civics has to be more incorporated into the courses? I don't know. What other, what are some of the barriers? What other, what are some of the barriers? Now, some of it is not great elected officials. Maybe that's part of it. I'm just saying. So, you need, it's a combination of figuring out what's of interest to students and then trying to hook them up to policies that are of interest to them. But, so how do you, what are some of the obstacles that you'd like to have overcome in order to get more people both to register and to vote? There's one thing to register, another thing to vote.
Thank you for the question. Yes, the obstacles to registration, it takes persistence. I find that the paper forms are a much more effective way to grab the students rather than saying, hey, take this link and cross your fingers that they'll continue to fill it out as they walk away. I hold them at the table, say, fill this out right now. You know all the answers. This is not complicated. I do educate them when they're choosing a party to let them know that it could impact their participation in a primary election. And then, I take it and I put them in the mailbox. So, recognizing that, just that form of giving it to them, getting it to the post office, filling it out, those things get lost a lot of the time in the hands of the students, unfortunately. So, they fill it out on the spot with me. There's also something that's fairly new. I think it's two or three years old now called Voter Education Week, which now is a new national civic holiday from October 7th to 11th. And it has several days, each day has a theme. And want to, you know, make a plan to vote, understand the ballot is one day, know where you need to go to check your voter status or check your polling place. So, I think making sure that our students are aware of those things prior to the election is a great timing. And also, the early voting does help tremendously. So, we're telling our students, look, you can start voting from now, taking again, anticipating any excuse that they might come up with and say, okay, you can't make it on election day, no problem. You can go here, 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 and here on these days and make sure that your vote is cast. So, those types of things are beneficial. I will confess that I'm a resident of Long Island, and there, the voting, early voting is different. You can go to any voting site in your county. So, you're not assigned a voting site.
We're trying to get that here, but.
Yes. And I think that that would help tremendously as well, because if I say, okay, Kingsborough students, we're going to vote early on these days, and we can take a group of students to that designated location as a group, I think that that would help tremendously as well, because we're taking them to a concentrated poll site where all of our Brooklyn residents, for instance, could vote. I also would love to see Kingsborough, CUNY campuses as sites for early voting as well. I think that that would help.
Well, the problem with that, though, is that they will then be taking over the gym, the cafeteria, or something for nine days. And before you know it, you're going to have people complaining about that. I just warn you.
Thank you for the warning.
We're trying to pull out of schools, high schools, right now. So, be careful what you ask for.
Sure, sure, thank you. It would get the turn up, turnout up, though.
Yeah, but you wouldn't, you have other complaints. Unless you can find a place that's absolutely unused that you could have the site.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. But, so, how does the funding work for Kingsborough or elsewhere in terms of the persons who are doing this?
So, funding, this is a labor of love. This is something that I've added into my job description. But again, a lot of those national organizations that I've cited are very helpful. They give free resources, the materials, the Instagram graphics, the emails are already drafted. So, a lot of these organizations are huge supports to make the lift a lot easier. There are grant funds that are available as well. And as I mentioned, you know, free pizza, which I was pretty surprised was that easy. A pizzeria called and said, I'm here to deliver your 10 pies? And I said, I didn't order 10 pies. And I thought I was being scammed, but then it was the effortlessness of me just filling out this form and the pizza showed up.
If I may add, may I? BMCC, the Borough Manhattan Community College, identified some funding sources that they have, some grants they've received. And so, they have $9,000 in a grant from Help America Vote, and that's a mini-grant. The National Voter Registration Day Community College Grant of $2,413. And then, they have the Vote Early Day Funding of $1,000 and a $5,000 grant from Ask Every Student. So, there are some resources out there. We may need to promote them a little more for the other campuses to make sure that everybody gets a little something, because otherwise, it's a CUNY job. It's what you do in addition to what you do.
And are there colleges around the country, not to say that maybe CUNY is doing it best, certainly a possibility, that you look to to see if there are ways that we could increase?
CUNY and Kings, and New York are very unique, given our student population as well. But there are, there's an organization called the All In to Vote Challenge, and they provide, when we submit our action plan each year, they'll score it and then they'll compare it to national averages and give you feedback. So, that's another great resource. And they do rank the community colleges, they rank the schools by grouping as well. So, it helps you pick a comparable goal of an institution that would align with the demographics and the makeup of your own institution.
I mean, I have a little bit of a good perspective. I have a lot of CUNY interns, and I teach at Hunter. And I will tell you that even as teaching seniors, nobody's ever opened a newspaper, ever. And I understand that's the world that we live in, but that's a challenge that needs, that's part of civic education. And the second thing is, you know, I would actually suggest, I get a little frustrated because some of my colleagues, not these two, don't meet with students who are talking about journalism or have a school project. They don't. So, they call me, they call somebody here. I think it would be great to have the students en masse, call council, assembly, whatever they want on a student project, and then keep tally, who responds and who doesn't, and then publish it. You give some action, because it is, that's what we're supposed to be doing, because it's not a legitimate reporter or something that is, they will not respond. So, I suggest that as a project. Thank you.
I have just one quick question, and then I'll turn it over to Councilmember Botcher. The election coordinator at each school, Ms. Nasser, you said it's a labor of love. I think that's wonderful. Is CUNY sort of relying on that model, though? Is it, I don't know, sustainable to have at every single campus this election coordinator and hoping you find someone who just like really cares and wants to do it out of the goodness of their heart?
I'm not certain how each of them gets appointed or selected or voluntold to do this. But, you know, in most instances, it is someone who is willing and wanting to do that. And I don't know.
And it is at every campus, though, right?
I'm sorry?
There is one at every campus?
Each campus has a coordinator, yes.
Am I on? Yes. The voter registration coordinator comes through the campus. So, whether it's through the president's office or the VP of Student Affairs, they select who that person would be to serve as the voter registration coordinator on that campus.
And that's a full-time faculty member?
No, it's someone in the Office of Student Affairs, so.
Let me rephrase. It is assigned to a full-time faculty member?
Right, well, full-time staffer, yes.
Okay.
And it's usually part of their other responsibilities that they may have in their portfolio.
Right, okay.
As well. So, it's not standalone, you know, you're just the voter registration coordinator and that's it.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm sorry, Councilmember Botcher, just one other thing. In terms of the, you mentioned a lot about early voting, maybe making the colleges a poll site, they can vote anywhere, all wonderful ideas. Do you also assist students in applying for mail-in ballots? Is that part of, part of your effort?
Yes.
Okay. And that's across campuses?
Assist students in.
Well, one of the ways to increase voter participation is to have students mail in their ballots rather than go to a poll site. So, I'm just asking if it is part of the structure of this system that across all campuses, you are assisting voters or encouraging them to apply for a mail-in ballot?
We wouldn't be able to. It might vary by campus, but we wouldn't.
So, at the campuses I have NiPerg chapters, we produce a guide on absentee mail-in voting and when deadlines are. And then, it's part of our Get Out the Vote regular outreach. So, we're reserving tables in high-traffic areas of campus to stop students and say, hey, if you made your voter plan, when are you going to go vote? Pick a date, pick a time, where's your poll site? And, you know, as they're making their voter plan, if they're like, I'm not going to make it to the polls, then we bring out the mail-in voting.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Botcher.
Hi.
Hello.
Is every CUNY student provided with voter registration forms at the beginning of the school year?
Yes, they are supposed to be provided. Usually, it's done electronically via an email with a link to a voter registration form. Also, voter registration forms, and Helen could probably speak to this as well, is provided to incoming freshman students and transfer students as part of their orientation. They're given a form and then asked to take it back. And then, I know also in the Office of Accessibility Services, if anyone, student comes in to ask for services, they're asked if they're registered to vote and assisted in completing a voter registration form if they do so, so.
That's provided electronically every year, or something that's emailed to students?
Yes, all of them, right. It's a mandate, actually, from the state that every campus is to have a communication that's voter-themed and with it, a link to the voter registration form as well as an absentee ballot form.
And you'll see that in the list, that a number of the campuses submitted it as a part of what they do. So, it is indicated here.
New York State election law mandates that every SUNY student gets man, gets sent a voter registration at the beginning of the school year and during presidential cycles in January or February of that year. That applies to CUNY as well.
Correct.
Are there other states or municipalities that are doing exciting things that we've been looking at that we could replicate here? I imagine that there's some states, especially this year, where there's really big effort to register students to vote. And it'd be interesting to know what new things are being done there that we could potentially look at.
I'll, this isn't, unfortunately, for this election, because it would require state, state law to be passed. But states with the highest youth turnout have reforms like same-day registration and automatic registration. New York has done some good work in expanding voter registration laws in the last few years after many years of stagnant laws, but reducing the deadline to 10 days, having an online voter portal. But again, to underline something Helen said before, it's really the face-to-face registration that gets forms actually filled out, especially when it's a student talking to another student and saying, here's why I registered and why I think you should too. But those reforms, New York still hasn't done and would greatly improve voter turnout among students who may show up to the poll site and unfortunately not be registered, unless it's the first day of early voting, and then they can still register and vote on the same day.
We do have a lot of work to do here in New York. And same-day registration, things like that. It'd be exciting to partner together with you as we pursue those.
The other thing I was going to add is that the All In campaign, because it was a competition when it began, it generated a lot of unique kinds of ideas that were, that may have been local, but they certainly have opportunity for being generalized to other places. And so, that might be a place we can look as well, because they have a good cadre of things.
I heard the word competition, and I like, it was actually a former college professor of mine who suggested that having voter registration competitions. And he mentioned, I mean, I'm not sure this is, the panel, like an answer, but he said there were some legal hurdles to go through when having a competition to register the most people to vote. And you're nodding your head, is, this is familiar to you?
Yeah, you can't like trade off. If you register, you get this thing unless it's available to people, anyone who comes to an event, whether or not they register. So, you could do something like, if you register, if you, you get thrown into a randomized, like rally, sorry, not rally, raffle. But it can't be like, the more you register, the more likely you are to win.
Well, then, our Board of Elections has a problem, because every time you vote, they give out a sticker and the pens. So, we're in trouble. But it would be even, I would suggest even a friendly competition between campuses would probably be okay.
Chair?
Yes.
Our colleges do competition. Baruch comes to my mind. Every year during their Fall Fest, they used to have a competition around with their clubs, their student clubs, who could register to vote, you know, the most students. And, you know, then there would be some kind of prize. Maybe Student Affairs would, you know, help them with some additional resources, that particular club. But there have been some, you know, whether or not, you're not supposed to do the competitions or not, it's news to me. But there are, there are some competitions that do go on at some of our campuses.
We've spoken a lot about voter registration and voter participation, which is sort of the baseline, I think, of engaging people in our electorate, of course. And the council, one of the ways that every council member engages with their community is through community boards. These are, they deal with issues, they're advisory, and they deal with issues such as like land use, which is huge in New York City. And we help appoint members of those committees. So, we're very, we work very closely with our community boards in general. And I'm wondering if CUNY, through their civic engagement, has any efforts to work with their local community boards, much like we do, much like local elected officials do?
No, not to my knowledge.
You notice, I'm.
Yeah. Well, it seems to me, one of the basic ways that people can engage in, whether it's issue-oriented or in their neighborhoods, is through engagement with the community board, similar to efforts to provide internships with local elected officials. And as we're looking for ways for students to make an impact on our city and on their community, that seems to me to be sort of a very basic one.
I know that we do provide that information through social media. Whenever the applications are open, we've done that through CUNY Votes. And I know that Helen mentioned the participatory budgeting, right? So, I mean, it's not necessarily through community boards, but that's, you know, a way for a student to be familiar that community boards exist and there for a purpose, so.
Speedy, do you have any awareness? Do you have any awareness about, I'm asking you? No, no.
Okay, okay, good. Yeah, it seems, it seems that, you know, outside of voting and registering, there are a lot of opportunities that are built in that don't take a big stretch. You know, placing a kid in an internship or a young adult in an internship is critical, but it's also, you know, a lot of effort to engage a student in a community board meeting, because there's going to be a giant development next to Kingsborough Community College. And those are free to attend. You can even attend online. That seems to be an easier hurdle to overcome. So, I want to thank you, the panel, for coming and all of the help, the assistance that was provided today. There's certainly a lot of work that CUNY is doing to engage our electorate, but there's certainly a lot more that I think could be done to improve it. You know, something as simple as assessing yourselves using metrics and making that, those metrics public so that communities and the public can also provide their input. You know, engaging with our offices, I don't think anyone would say no to an internship. Gail Brewer never says no to an intern. So, what do you have, like 50 of them?
When I was Borough President, we had 159. And now, last time, we had 40.
Wow.
There you go. Gail gets all the interns. But, you know, through, through the metrics, through posting it publicly, you know, the internships, engaging with local organizations that already exists. And I think what sounds to me like a need to do a more systematic effort to do mail-in ballots, there's lots of room for growth in a system that's already clearly important to CUNY, right? Improving civic engagement and really making the CUNY system, you know, a voting powerhouse, because we're facing a lot of challenges when it comes to CUNY. The funding, for example. And I think it would be really powerful for CUNY as a system to say, these are, you know, our students are coming out in droves and voting. And from the perspective of students, really, really making their voices heard and really showing that it's time for elected officials to start listening to them a little more. I want to thank you all for coming and for the work you're doing.
Thank you.
And congratulations to Ms. Nasser's parents. We'll call the next panel in a moment. We'll call the next panel in a moment. Okay, we will now call our first public panel. I remind the members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings at testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out the appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have three minutes to speak on today's hearing topic, increasing CUNY's students' civic engagement. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. I will now call the first panel. Alexis Ramirez, Akeem Polak, Salimatu Dumbaya, and Tahisha Fields. And prior to your testimony, please state your name for the record.
Akeem Polak.
Thank you, you may begin.
I'm going first. All right, greetings, members of the committee. I am Akeem from York College in Queens. It's a CUNY school, of course. And today, my testimony will be surrounding our topics, engaging CUNY students in the voting and civic activities. You know, just being here, I, you know, I heard from the previous panel of the CUNY administrators and, you know, it just alarmed me. A lot of the times, we have these, you know, programs, these civic programs that we create to kind of promote this kind of activity. But in cases of students like me, we don't know about it, you know? And that is one of the biggest issues, communication. Additionally, I wanted to touch on the fact that these civic education programs sometimes are just limited to come and register to vote. The students don't know what they're voting for. They have no idea who is even running. And believe me, they're students who they only know this because of these memes going around with the debate and all of that. You know, that's when they really got in tuned into what's happening, but even leading up to it, they have no idea. They have no idea on how these, well, these politicians, where they stand, their policy objectives, all of that. It's just not there. They just don't know. And sometimes it feels like these registration efforts are just, just go vote. But there's no idea about, you know, what am I voting for? And I feel like civic education is needed in that case. Additionally, I'm a part of the University Student Senate, and one of our key objectives this year has to do with removing the barriers of transportation for CUNY students. We're supporting free metro cards, free metro cards for all CUNY students. And I realize that I could tie this into voting because we want to have more civic education programs. You could hear, for example, Macaulay Honors College is offering these programs, but how does a York student get there? You know, it's a lot of money to pay for that if you don't qualify for one of the ASAP or ACE programs. And it's important, especially now, to start that free metro cards thing for CUNY students. The Department of Transportation has this on their website. In 2020, 10 transit companies or agencies across the entire United States gave same-day free riding or transportation to voting areas. And then I'm like, it's the same way. Now, you need to give students that same-day access, but that same-day access needs to be every day if you really want them a part of the civic and the entire voting process. Because even after voting, you know, being engaged in community activities, you spoke about community boards and all of that. So really, free metro cards and we're hoping that that will help with helping the voting.
Thank you.
Chair Dinowitz, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to testify. So here we are.
Can you just say your name for the record, please?
Salimatu Dumbuya. Here we are, the students that everybody talks about. Again, my name is Salimatu Dumbuya and I am a student at the New York City College of Technology, studying architecture. I'm now in my fifth year and with a minor in business management. I am also the chairperson of the CUNY University Student Senate and the CUNY Student Trustee. And I have been in this position for three years now. I remember when I was first running, a student telling me, "Why would elected officials even listen to you ever? You're not even from here. You're from Guinea." And I told her, "Well, as the Chair of USS, you're not necessarily representing yourself. You're representing the entire CUNY student community." Like 275,000 students and so many of them have a stake, so many of them have a right to vote. So as an influencer, we have a lot of power. And that's what the University Student Senate represents. For me, logically, tangibly, on paper, everywhere, it's the single centralized institution of CUNY that engages every institution, all of the 25 campuses. Our constituency, our membership, has students from all campuses, around four, sometimes six students, that come to represent their constituencies on the University Student Senate, and we get engaged. For us, civic engagement does not start months before or during a year. It's not a specific time. It is all the time. The students that come into USS sometimes are only aware of what's happening on their campuses and they want to make an impact. Then they come into USS and realize, "Hey, listen, there is so much more going on. We should go testify at the city council. We should go to the state legislator. Do we have an opportunity to go to DC to advocate for our international students? We should actually do it." The University Student Senate opens doors, it opens up the perspectives, and it opens up possibilities for students. It is a student-founded, student-funded organization where students make their own decisions on what they support and how they support it. First-hand experiential learning on what policy is, on what running a campaign is, because you have to run your campaign to get elected. I run three of those and I won three of them. And we are about to have other elections where students are learning the process. There are so many people in New York City and New York State politics today that went through USS. Everywhere we go with our scarves and with our logo, we are being recognized. Some students that come in USS and cannot stay for more than one semester end up joining their community board because they got a taste of how much impact they can make. And because it is our space and because we control what happens in there, we get to experience what we want government to be like. And that is the beauty of the University Student Senate. This year, we are operating under the motto of one voice, the power of one voice. That bleeds into our free metro cards campaign and everything else that we're doing. So our students want to vote. Our students will get out to vote and they will encourage their peers to vote because they get to experience it. Nobody tells them, they see it. Because USS is your mini United Nations, it's your mini government, where you become more than just a student, you become a part of the making of our great city and state.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello, my name is Tahisha Fields and I've been newly elected to USS. I am the new president of Graduate Student Assembly in Baruch, and I am a graduate student. So my perspective for graduate students is very unique because I'm an older graduate student, but a graduate student nevertheless. There are still some students that are not civically engaged because they don't have the knowledge of what's going on with policies. I think because politics is not formed in a way that can be digestible for them. I feel like when it's student-led governments, like the one that I'm leading and the one I'm in with USS, it allows students to understand that just because you may not have the knowledge of what's going on, you can take your voice and be allowed into anything that you advocate for. I think people, mostly students, are not aware that you don't have to have full knowledge of policy to be in advocacy. I know that on Baruch, we have different kinds of policies that are going on, but going on the retreat for USS made it more of a bigger scope for me. What I can say about the policies of getting more students to be more engaged in voting, it's more about making it more digestible and more relatable to what their needs are in the current state of mind. They do see that a lot of things that are going on, it's more of, I can't say it, but of course, I'm an older student, but some of the younger students want things that are more tangible for them. And I think when you're allowed the interconnectivity of both the older generation and the younger generation to understand that all our needs are the same, it allows more student engagement. The other issue that I want to talk about is free metro cards. Yes, being an older student has been a little bit of a struggle for me. I am in a full-time mental health counseling program and I do commute. All CUNY students are commuters and they are coming from their homes, their several jobs, and it can be a little expensive. I feel like if there is a way to alleviate that stress, it allows students to be more mindful of what's going on in their classes, then worry about what bills would have to be tightened in order to get a metro card. So I feel like being in student advocacy and allowing more transparency for students to be engaged and allowing them to register to vote will make it more accessible for students in all 25 CUNEs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dear honorable council members, my name is Alexis Ramirez and I would like to thank you all for having me here and giving me the opportunity to speak. I represent a diverse and robust campus not too far from here in the heart of Tribeca. I am a senator for the Borough of Manhattan Community College and I also serve as a delegate for the University Student Senate. And I know my colleagues have touched on this subject, but we as a body have broken strides to encourage our fellow students to be active participants in our civilized society, to be active members in our democracy. And in the spirit of community, camaraderie, and representation, I think we are here to declare our commitment to ensuring and fostering student civic engagement and ensuring that we have the resources necessary to register as many people to vote as we can. And I know wholeheartedly that as a body and as a school community, we have done our part, but I know that more is possible. And I know that organizations like Nyberg and Help America Vote have broken strides and broken the glass ceiling to ensure that we as students are heard. And I think we're doing our part now and ensuring our fellow peers are having their voices heard by speaking to our elected officials. And in these unprecedented and obscure times, I ask my elected officials to encourage my fellow peers to unleash and yield the power that each and every one of us possesses. What power, you may ask, the power to choose. But with such power comes great responsibility and the resources needed to tackle that responsibility. A lot of our organizations are woefully underfunded and understaffed and require more resources by our elected officials. A lot of these resources are tackling, are tackling tough hours, are tackling, you know, the inability to hire new people, to get more people to volunteer. And it's causing a lack in our ability to be heard as a student and as a demographic. Touching on what some of my colleagues have mentioned, part of our plight and our struggle for fairness is the ability to commute. The ability to be able to go up to our campuses without the fear that financial hurdles will get in their way. In a city that's so expensive, in a city that many are facing food insecurity, the right to commuting is a necessity. With that, we encourage our elected officials to champion our beliefs, to champion our cause, to champion the belief that transportation and commute is a right. And with that said, I would also ask my elected officials to champion the belief that access to an education is a right and not a privilege. And with that, champion the belief that the people's university should be free of cost. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I mean, first off, I think you representing your student body, being in the senate, I think demonstrates your commitment to civic engagement, but also being here, testifying publicly at a city council hearing, I think the four of you serve as a model of what good publicly at a city council hearing, I think the four of you serve as a model of what good civic engagement can really look like. Have you, anyone can answer this, have any of you been involved in any of the CUNY-led initiatives for civic engagement, some of which we heard about from CUNY staff at today's hearing? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm actually a BMCC ambassador for the organization Help America Vote, which my responsibilities basically entail, you know, going around campus with the clipboard, asking students to register to vote, and educating them on their rights, educating them on the process itself, and that's mostly what I've been doing. Again, that organization is unfortunately understaffed and in need of more people, but the problem that I firsthand that I have seen is that a lot of students aren't really willing to engage with us. They kind of just maybe hear us out for the two minutes that we speak to them and it kind of goes over their head. So we would have to, you know, insist on them filling out a form or encouraging them to vote, but I've seen that there's a lack of interest in unfortunately my peers and my generation for this willingness to vote that older generations have taken advantage of.
Are there things, let's say for that example, CUNY could be doing more effectively? For example, you mentioned understaffing, which sounds like funding, so funding greater training perhaps, are any of these things would be helpful, would any of these things be helpful in your work that you work with at CUNY?
I don't necessarily think that training is the issue. I do believe that the scarce resources are because I know that there is a commitment within my school's administration and within the people I worked with to ensure our students vote and register. I just think that, you know, the lack of resources and maybe the, you know, a lot of these volunteers are juggling work schedules, you know, class schedules, extracurriculars, so it does, it does become overbearing. So I believe if maybe there are additional resources sort of alleviate that overburden, I think that would go and create great, great progress.
If I may also, I think that CUNY can do better in collaborating with the student governments and the campus-wide student organizations like USS. I think that students need to be met where they are and students need to be spoken to in the language that they understand. And sometimes we just understand each other better. So I think more formalized partnerships, more formalized collaborations, and recognition of everybody's strength may be a direction towards more progress.
And you know, Chair, you mentioned it earlier when you suggested that like, why isn't this a part of like curriculum? You know, and I think that's a direction to go as well, because no matter what course you do, you know, it involves politics, it involves policies, it involves various laws and all of that. So it would be good to have that in there, not with people with an agenda though, but just to educate.
So I mean, you mentioned curriculum, which leads me to, you know, the professors. Have you been seeing, you know, besides those political science classes, are you seeing in your classrooms at all any sort of effort to integrate civic engagement with various topics?
If I may go, so I'm an architecture major and that sounds like the most unconventional thing you could do sitting here, but I actually have been observing it and I have been watching some of my professors be more open to it than others. In this major where you get the opportunity to be creative, to set things up and to put your ideas into paper and into different types of things, I have faced situations where my question is, how do you do social development? How do you promote political shift with architecture? And my professors have been open to these ideas. So from my perspective, it is important that when students come up with these creative ways to do things, that professors are open and also that they find the ability to adapt to it. Some of us want to be super technical, some of us want to be very philosophical before they can be technical, and it also helps them in their development. That's what I find in my major.
I can say in my major, I'm sorry, I can say in my major, we engage a lot because it's mental health counseling and we make it more broad, but we also bring it in of the psychology part and people's mind and well-being of it. We know when it comes to political advocacy and differences, it can be a little bit tenseful of what you believe. I think getting to a point that people understand that whatever side that you're on, you can have your beliefs and be respectful and still be able to debate and understand what you're doing. I think there is parts that people don't know how to express their, what it is about politics and it can be a little confusing sometimes. And I think when it's in a way that whatever is that you believe that can be your own core value, it is what you are, but also be able to know that differences do matter, but in a very resourceful way, because people will have discourse, but it's okay to have a little discourse, but be respectful in it.
And lastly, I know Alexis, you're actually involved with CUNY in registering people, but for the other three on the panel, have you seen some of the voter registration and engagement efforts on your campus, things that were testified to today? Have you personally seen those?
Yeah, so at York, you, especially when it comes closer to the elections, they set up polling booths and you have people you can talk to to register, to vote and all of those things. So they're very, they're very effective in that, you know, you have signage everywhere. But again, students end up not doing it because they just don't know, they really just don't understand the entire process, you know, and I think that's, that's the problem.
For Baruch, they have their clubs that are doing and they have their little competitions. I know USG and GSA are doing a big thing, they do it every election year, so there are different opportunities on our campus for voter registration and voter engagement. I think it's more about making sure if they are registered, to make sure they actually are voting, so they aren't allowing it to do on Baruch on this campus, but I think they're trying to speak to them like, yes, you are registered, but make sure this is the time that you need to go and vote. So that's what's happening on my campus.
From the USS perspective, we hold Get Out the Vote rallies, we hold staplings on different campuses, and we also offer monetary and non-monetary sponsorships and cosponsorship to different clubs, organizations that want to engage in these activities, and we also work with CUNY Votes from time to time.
I want to thank the four of you for coming to testify today, for the work you do at CUNY and for, again, demonstrating what good civic engagement can look like. I will call the next panel in a moment. Okay, our next panel will be Sharon Brown, John Morales, and Junior Andrews. Okay, may begin when ready and please state your name for the record.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Junior E. Andrews. I'm a student at Met Gevers College at Crown Heights and I'm also part of the USS Student Senate. Sorry, I was a little late, so I just got my nerves in check. All right, so my reason for coming today is basically, it's a topic that was, been on my mind for a while, where students is concerned, food insecurity. It has to do with higher education, because a lot of students in the college has EBT cards, but they can't use it on the campus itself to purchase meals.
I just want to remind you, this is a hearing on civic engagement at CUNY.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but part of the reason I brought that up is because part of, if you don't, if you aren't able to eat, you can't civically engage in much things. And it's part of the higher education process that a student must be able to have food, to engage in anything on campuses or anything citywide. So one of the things of civic engagement that will happen in a school, we have in voter registration tomorrow, and that is part of the drive of connecting hunger with voting. For kids to pay attention, if they don't have that capacity to buy food, they're not engaged. And if they're not engaged, they're not feel a responsibility to come vote for anybody or to have any kind of civil engagements in the day-to-day activities. Yes, so my... Yeah, thank you. So my contribution to this hearing basically is to link both civic engagement with the hunger situation on college campuses around New York City. So if the students are not able to concentrate and focus on things that, from a perspective of having nutrition, civic engagement is a waste of time. They will not come out and vote, they will not be engaged. Because in order for us to get them to register to vote, we have to have some type of food or something to convince them to come to register and then engage and think about voting. That's my...
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me? Yes, so my name is John Morales. I am a student president at LaGuardia Community College and I came here to testify. Okay, thank you. Well, I'd like to speak a little bit about my own background. So I am an immigrant from Ecuador, I came here for asylum, and currently I am not able to take FAFSA, which is federal student aid, because I am not a citizen. Thanks to the Jose Peral Act, I am able to take TAP, which is a tuition assistance program for the state, which covers for my tuition. Now, as an immigrant, I believe I can't vote and it is, I want to bring up a lot of opportunities that I would like, that I was able to take in government, both in the country and at LaGuardia. My dad actually worked for the government, a government department in my home country, which is why I am inspired to take on government and I would like to work in government in the future. However, there have been some opportunities that I wasn't able to take since I am not a citizen and that has hindered my ability to get more involved in government. At one point, I actually got accepted for a position as an assistant for a congress member, but the day I showed up on the office, they told me they couldn't do anything because apparently they, somebody wasn't looking and they didn't know, they couldn't give me the job. And that was after I already went there and I was in the office. I believe in my own way, I would like to inspire as much change as I can. One of the issues that, not necessarily related to civic engagement, but that is very important to both USS and CUNY is MetroCards. Now, since I don't have, I have the TAP aid, which helps me for my tuition. I chose LaGuardia because of its affordability, but also because, well, it has my major and affordability, but it's not a convenient location. It is very far from my house, I live by Howard Beach, it is really far from Long Island City, which is more or less where LaGuardia is located. And transportation is something I have to access to a lot every single day. It is more or less two trips going in and going back, and it's more or less five days a week that I have to go there, adding on different meetings for SGA, which is student government, and for USS, which is why I believe either Free MetroCards or some alternative could be very useful for me. There's an alternative called ASAP, but it is inconvenient for me because it also has some eligibility requirements, like taking on extra courses. I am an engineering major and I have an academically challenging course load at the moment. I don't think I can afford taking any more classes that would, that would require, that were required of me. That is my experience and that is what I want to say. I wanted to share about my own experience first and why I couldn't be that involved, even though I want to be.
Hello, my name is Sharon Brown. Okay, for higher education civic engagement, I believe that the schools and the city council, city hall should incorporate freedom of religion as far as people defending the freedom of religion in school, because this will help out the problems that they're having in school, the shootings, the different atmosphere that's going on. The reason why we have those things is because no one did their civic engagement concerning when prayer was taken out of school, we need it back in, we need the praise and worship Bible, we need the chorus. As those things came out of school, you started to see more problems, you started to see more crime, you started to see more shootings over the years. So when I was in school, I registered people to vote and I also was trying to get them to make sure they didn't remove prayer. I had seen in the 93 that we were headed towards major problems in school if they took out the religious portion, the freedom of religion. No one did their civic engagement to fight for freedom of religion, and this is why we're dealing with what we're dealing with now. So when, in 93, when I was trying to get people to put prayer back in, the Bible back in, the Ten Commandments, everything Jewish and Christian, Christmas carols, major scenes, even here, we should have major scenes Bible onsite during the holidays and things. Because those civic engagements are lacking, we are experiencing shootings and things, they have drag shows in school. This is direct conflict with all the things that I've just listed. If we had those things in there, we wouldn't have pornographic books and materials in school, we wouldn't have school shootings, we wouldn't have the major problems that we're having. So we need people to stand up for freedom of religion. This is something that people don't know, that it's really connected to your civil rights, your civic engagement, but we, the law basically comes from the Bible. The Ten Commandments, Louisiana, I believe, or two states have decided they're going to put the Ten Commandments in school. I had the argument that the Ten Commandments is based on the Bible. So if we take the Bible out of school, we're essentially taking out law and order and then we get school shootings, pornographic materials, we get all kinds of things that the Bible prohibits. So if you see, the Bible prohibits it, it happens when you take the Bible out of school.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We also have Isabel Torres. Thank you. Would you also please state your name for the record?
Hello, okay, hi, yes, I'm Isabel Torres. Do I just continue with my testimony or, okay. So I'm Isabel Torres, I'm a sophomore at Queensborough Community College and I'm also a new delegate for the University Student Senate. So I just want to speak on a little bit of my experience. This spring, I was a full-time student and I was a part of my school's outdoor track team, as well as involved in student government. And at the same time, I had an internship through CUNY Spring Forward and I worked two part-time jobs, so just try to imagine my schedule is very hectic. But I'm not the only CUNY student that has that experience. And CUNY is comprised of hustlers, individuals simply trying to get an education. At the time, a resource that I was grateful to have was a Free MetroCard provided by ASAP. And it was one less financial worry on my plate and was the reason why I was so successful last semester. Because of this Free MetroCard, I didn't hesitate to take an internship in Manhattan, nor did I hesitate to join the track team, which met five times a week. I didn't have to worry about the financial burden of my commute to class, and most importantly, I did not hesitate to come here today. I did not hesitate to come here today, to come here and speak today. By providing free MetroCards for all CUNY students, you'd allow us to have access to all of the opportunities that are available to us without the financial barrier of transportation. That's why it's crucial for students to vote, because things like free MetroCards are on the ballot this year. Free MetroCards would ensure CUNY students have access to their polling locations, removing transportation costs as a barrier to voting. This also promotes equity, giving all students the same opportunity to participate in elections, ensuring fair representation and greater civic engagement amongst all students. So that was my testimony. But I also want to speak a little more on what I heard today and just to give my insight. I'm also Student Government Association President at Queensborough. So you had asked the previous panel, what have we seen on campus? And last week, we had like, last Wednesday, we had a table where we were giving out free snacks, and something that I'm just noticing is that students aren't educated enough on what's going on now. Like that's, education is the biggest, I guess, barrier. Why are students going to register, register to vote for something they don't know what they're voting on? They're not aware. And I feel like that starts in class, like we had, like was, like what was mentioned, in a way that I feel like that could get done, rather than having a class, because I'm a business administration student, I'm not really gonna pay to have like a, a class that falls under political science, right? It's thinking logically. A course that was very important to me my freshman year was freshman intro, like a freshman intro class or first-year student success. And I feel like a great way to promote education, sorry, I'm running out of time, but a great way to promote civic engagement and just voter education in general would be through classes like that, because it's reaching the new students, it's reaching the freshman students. So I feel like that's a great way to start, or yeah, I guess, so that's, that's all.
Thank you, thank you so much. Have any, the three of you who are involved in CUNY, have you been personally, if you could talk a little more maybe, but personally involved with any of the CUNY-led activities in addition to maybe the table you did, but things that are spearheaded by the CUNY faculty? Any other involvement you want to talk about?
Personally, myself, no. I would like to be part of that, if that is, if it's on the table, definitely. The closest what has been, I've seen is basically what happens on the campus, or when we go to USS meeting, we talk about stuff concerning CUNY, but in terms of the broader prospect of it, I don't see it. And secondly, I would like to just echo sentiments on the MetroCard, free MetroCard. One of the things that is happening in the campus right now, freshmen are coming in, but by sophomore, they drop out. So the retaining rate is low because of two reasons, transportation and food insecurity. And so far, the USS has done an excellent job, through our chairman, Madam, our chair of the USS, who has pushed the initiative for free MetroCard. But in terms of CUNY itself, I think CUNY itself as an educated body has not invested enough in the urban schools and in a project to foster freshmen coming in to stay in the different colleges.
Well, Mr. Andrews, I'll tell you two things. One, it's very clear the USS has their talking points very clear. Made everyone repeat, MetroCard, MetroCard, MetroCard. But in your case in particular, you'd like to be more involved. We have, we still have a couple, a couple of CUNY administrators here and Nyberg here, and I'm sure they would be more than happy to speak with you after today's hearing.
Thank you.
I want to thank this panel. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Brewer has some questions.
I just, on the EBT card, just so you know, that's 100% federal. So that would be an example where advocating would not cost a city or the state anything. So to me, that would be something that you should be able to get. Now, MetroCard costs city and state, so that's a different story. We've heard it before. I completely understand the need for it, but EBT, nothing. So I would suggest that that would be something that you guys might want to take up as an issue, because it might happen quickly.
Thank you, Councilmember. I have started pushing the movement in this in a couple of different ways. Couple of days ago, I was in DC for the Black Congressional Caucus, and I had the opportunity to speak to Representative Cunningham and a couple of other people from NAACP. Also had the opportunity to speak on, to some of the CUNY chancellors at our retreat. One of the things that I'm noticing is that a lot of people underestimate the power and the security EBT gives to a lot of single mothers who go to college, kids who come from home that is disadvantaged.
We know all that. What I'm saying, I'm like, end game.
Yes, end game EBT is easy to fix, and I would hope the council pushed to fix it.
I know, but I can tell you gotta figure out how to get there, and that would be a question, since it doesn't cost the city or the state anything, because EBT doesn't, then it would be worth looking to see exactly how you could do it, because I think it could happen as a, I mean, we know the need for it, that's not the issue. Issue is the process to get to it. Maybe IBO, Independent Budget Office, I would ask them to do a study, try to get some outside support, not just you guys.
Yes.
We're doing it.
Thank you.
You need help, let me know, I'm good at that.
Oh, I would, I would definitely tap you.
Okay, I will thank you, this panel.
Can I just say something?
I'm, I'm sorry, testimony is closed for this panel. We will be calling our next panel on Zoom in a moment. So this concludes the in-person portion of our public testimony. We will now move to remote testimony. If you are testifying remotely, please listen for your name to be called. Once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you. You may then start your testimony once the sergeant-at-arms sets the clock and queues you to begin. So we have two people on this ballot. Kin Mai Ang. You may begin once you're unmuted and the sergeant queues you.
You may begin.
Great, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you very much for this opportunity, this, this mid-testimony on behalf of Generation Citizen at the New York City City Council Higher Education Committee. First of all, I very much enjoyed the presentations of the students just now. I'm Kin Mai Ang, I'm the Mid-Atlantic Executive Director of Generation Citizen. Via our community-based civics education, secondary students apply social studies learning to the real world by studying and advocating on an issue of importance in their communities. First and foremost, we're thankful to the city council for its $500,000 investment this year in our programming and youth civics education, through the Civics Education and New York City Schools Initiative, which we have been fortunate to receive since 2017. Today, I'm thrilled to testify about our voter education, engagement, and registration activities in New York City during this important election year to inform this hearing on, excuse me, on engaging students at the CUNY campuses in voting and civic activities. Many of our students in high school enroll in CUNY upon graduation, and some are already taking early college classes at CUNY campuses as a result of early college enrollment programs. Through Generation Citizen's RISE Vote Program, that's an acronym that stands for Registering, Informing, Supporting, and Empowering Vote. 2023 Voter Activation Campaign, we've created toolkits and resources for teachers in 11th and 12th grade classrooms across the city in public schools to inform, educate, and register 17 and 18-year-old students who will be eligible to vote in November 2024 for this important election. Building on our work this spring in high school classrooms, we're rolling out a toolkit through our fall professional development programs as well as dedicated trainings. In particular, we're targeting 23 New York City public high schools, I'm sorry, New York City public high schools, as well as engaging seven high schools in the Bronx, selected because the Bronx has lower voter registration rates for 18-year-olds at 18.6% relative to New York City's or other boroughs, with resources to run additional school-based education and registration events. We would love to work more closely with both CUNY and the city council to expand the reach of our resources this spring leading up to the election, the next month and a half. Generation Citizen again is incredibly thankful for the city council's renewed funding each year despite myriad challenges and budgetary concerns in the last year, and we hope to continue partnering with the council and CUNY to continue bringing high-quality civics education, as well as voter education and engagement to our city schools and to CUNY. Thank you for considering my testimony.
Thank you for your testimony, and thank you for your work and focusing on the Bronx, which, as you pointed out, needs a little more targeting when it comes to voter engagement and voter registration, so I appreciate that work.
Happy to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The following witness has also signed up to testify remotely. Peter Theodor Kasapis. If you're here, please raise your hand. If there's anyone else present in the room who has not had the opportunity to testify but wishes to do so, please raise your hand. Thank you, and thank you for attending today's hearing on voting and civic activities at CUNY. You know, we say this year is a really important election year, but really, every single election is a critical election year. A lot of the rules that govern CUNY is administered by the state, a lot of their funding by the city, and a lot of the issues that direct our entire nation are national. There's not a single election that is not important, and the work that CUNY does is really critical in ensuring the next generation of leaders are civically engaged in voting, in registering to vote, in voting, and in our communities. So I want to thank CUNY for the work they're already doing, and I look forward to working with you to ensure that we are engaging more and more of our students in our, in our local neighborhoods. With that, this meeting, this hearing is adjourned.